Okay.
All right, I'm going to share the agenda here and then Annette, you can call the meeting to order. I am only seeing half of, there we go. Can you guys see the agenda?
I have 25.
I see the narrative for the for the comp plan amendments.
Oh, I'm yeah, somehow I'm on page 25. So hang on. So Annette, the blue text on the agenda, as you open the meeting here, you're supposed to read that into the record.
Hi Joe. Okay.
Okay.
Is that after I call it?
Call the meeting to order, then read the the blue part, and then we can start moving through the agenda.
Are we doing the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
I have a flag.
Oh, good. Can you show it? Because I don't have one here.
Well, I just got my Fourth of July stuff out.
Okay.
Oh, boy. You have to pledge allegiance. Okay.
Pledge of allegiance is difficult. I recommend that one person lead it and everybody else mute and move their lips.
Oh, that's smart.
Oh, good call.
Wait, I can't find myself.
Okay, are you guys ready?
Yep.
So I call the May 20th, 2020 Planning Commission Study Session Special Meeting Agenda I Called to Orders at 6:00 PM. That was kind of lame, sorry. So up, so first, I'd like everybody to do the pledge of allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So it says pursuant to the Governor's Stay Home Stay Safe Order, the city will take actions unnecessary and routine business items. All items on the agenda have been vetted by the city for compliance with the government, excuse me, the Governor's order as being necessary and routine.
Okay. Oh, and and actually the black part, I think you're supposed to read as well.
Okay. The city is prohibited from conducting meetings unless the meeting is not conducted in person and instead provides options for the public to attend through telephone access, internet, or other means of remote access, and also provides the ability for persons attending the meeting not in person to hear each other at the same time. Therefore, the meeting will be conducted according to the following protocol. And then it lists that we have a remote access with a Zoom meeting with the Zoom meeting ID and a password and a call in number.
Perfect.
Okay. So the, so we have business items. Is a discussion for the design standards revision ordinance.
Carrie, do you want to take this?
You want me to?
You're muted.
Sorry. Go ahead if you want to.
Okay, so at our last meeting in March, we reviewed a couple of draft ordinances and since that time, we have tried to incorporate your final finishing touches on those ordinances and we've put them into ordinance format as they would be presented to the City Council if the Planning Commission chooses to recommend them. Tonight is just one last chance to look at the ordinance before the scheduled public hearing on June 1st. And so our our plan at this point is if the ordinance looks good, we, I believe we've already noticed the public hearing. If for some reason we we need to not move forward, we can obvi, we can change the public hearing notice. But this is just sort of the last chance for you to ask questions and to review this in its final form before it goes forward. And my recollection was the last meeting, there were the, there were only very minor changes to this. And I don't know, Carrie, if you have a list of what those are in front of you or or remember what those are off the top of your head. I I can't actually think of them right now.
Actually, there are no changes since the March meeting. That is when we made the final changes to this document. They were provided to the Planning Commission in red line. And the commission left that meeting, my understanding was making their their final decisions and how they wanted to see the amendments to this section. And we had, we had told McCormick Communities kind of what the Planning Commission's determination was, what they wanted to forward to council. So this is just basically going back over it because it's been a couple of months break before we hold the hearing. And we just want to make sure everyone's still on the same page and still feels the same way about the proposal.
Okay, so if there are any concerns, please raise them. And if not, we can move on to the second item on the agenda.
It was pretty much how I had recommended our conversations.
Great.
So we didn't change the size, right, of the sorry, not the garage, the sorry, I can't even think what I want to say. Remember, we had had talked about change of making the lot size larger, was it? And then we decided we were, then we talked about making it smaller. And then we went back to originally what we had planned. That's in there.
Which which lot size are you talking about?
Oh, shoot. I I think I remember this converse, I think I remember this as part of a separate conversation.
Yeah, this was the garage width.
Yeah.
Lot size. And I think what we had recommended was reducing the lot size for a three car garage. I think currently it's at 74 feet and they wanted to reduce it to 60. And I believe the Planning Commission asked that that not be changed in your recommendation going forward.
Right. Okay, that's what I'm thinking of.
Okay, sorry. It's been a while.
Yeah. Okay.
Do I recall that that this was also addressing a drop off from the freed and the easement and different levels?
That was one of the issues in the ordinance, but I think there wasn't any change to that from the last meeting. I think the recommendation from staff was supported by the Planning Commission and is still unchanged here. Is that right, Carrie?
That's correct.
Okay.
So so yeah, you do not see, there there was a table. And I'm looking for it here in this ordinance. That was in section 20.139, right, Carrie, where that table was on the garage width? So that's not actually in this because we chose not to recommend that change.
Okay, right. The only things that are in here are the things that are being changed. So this does not have everything in that in that section of the code, just the changes.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing further on this one, we can move on to significant trees. Is that okay with the chair?
Yes, sorry. I was reading something.
All right. So the other ordinance that was discussed in March was changes to chapter 20.129. And this was amending the old significant tree chapter to refocus that chapter on tree canopy while still retaining some some of the pieces of significant trees. And again, I know we had a lot of discussion of creating kind of a handbook for what species of trees we wanted replaced. And we looked at the example from Pauls Bow and I think Seattle and what was the other city? Bremerton, Carrie?
I think it was.
We looked at Bremerton and their street tree requirements, yes.
Right. So we made a few adjustments here and I believe that the recommendation is that we provide that type of guidance, but it's not actually part of the the code.
Correct.
So so we will be preparing something similar to that to accompany our adopted ordinance. But code purposes, we got this to the point where I believe it says it talked about native trees and not, right, Carrie, wasn't it?
It's it's native trees, but we also had some in there that if you're going to plant trees that are not native, here are the things that we recommend that you plant in specific situations. So it's not to interfere with curb and sidewalk, utility lines and things like that. Trees that are consistent with an urban environment.
Perfect. So anyway, this is just one last chance for you to view this before it is brought to you for seeking your recommendation after a public hearing on June 1st.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Is it going to be a remote public hearing?
We don't know yet. I think the Governor's Stay Home Order, or I'm sorry, the the Open Public Meetings Act Guidance expires on May 31st. If it expires, I believe that we have to open the council chambers, but we can still have everybody participate remotely. We just have to be there physically to allow people to testify if they want to testify or watch the meeting in person. So I I my understanding is that we will be doing it on Zoom, at least until we reach a level three reopening, which we're only potentially looking at level two towards the end of this month in Kitsap County.
Right.
I just sent out the hearing notice saying it's a Zoom meeting, so.
Okay.
So all in all, when I read this, I think it's much, much better than what we started with. The, there was one or two little things, the page 15, At the top, it says 4 of 13. But it's 15th page of the complete PDF document.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that citation?
20.129.030. You've got it there. On number two, I had to read that two or three or four times to make sure I got it because it was such a run on kind of sentence. Would that be easier to do as a bulleted format to make it more understandable?
Yeah, perhaps.
Can I show you my screen? Share my screen here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Looks like I can't do it when somebody else is sharing the screen.
I've stopped.
There we go, got it. All right, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Up here on the top note, basically re-formatted it. Does that make it any more clear to others? It's more clear to me.
Yeah, I think you need to insert some ors after each, after A and B, because it wouldn't be all three. It would be A, B, or C.
Yes, that's fine. But I just think it makes it much more easy to understand, especially when it got to C and you had the damage disease, safety hazard.
Sure. Yeah, I think you can probably make that change really easily before next meeting.
Can you send that to me, Dave?
Um, I can. I can. The other one that I glanced at was down here on the tree sizes. You have eight to 16 and then 16 to 22 to 18 to 24.
Oh, that, yeah, that needs to be corrected.
And as you can see, my comments to the right, they're evergreens, looks like they're increasing in six inch increments. I was trying to get the incremental sizes down. And I don't know, it doesn't need to be equal numbers, but if you look at it, it goes like eight inches, six inches, six inches, six inches, and then above.
I think what we're saying there is that under the old code, you had to be 18 inches in diameter to be a significant tree at all.
Correct. It was a single number, single measurement.
Right. And so here we are, and and it had a special threshold. If you were over 36 inches, then it had a different threshold. And we tried to make this tiered. And we were saying that some trees smaller than 18 inches are still significant trees, but they don't have to be replaced in a one to one ratio because they are such small trees relatively speaking.
Right. And I understand that. All I was asking about, because I, the concept, I think, works very well. I was asking about was, do we want those increments between the sizes to be equal for ease of understanding? Or just leave them as is, correcting that 16 to 18 line?
Yeah, I think that should be 16 to 20 and then 20 to 24, because they're going in in those middle three or four inch increments. And then yeah, we'll we'll take a look at that and clean that up.
I'll make those changes. I I'll make this changes, make that change to the tree table. And then if you'll just send me that other change to the wording for significant trees, Dave, I'll make that change too.
Okay. How do I unshare?
Should say stop sharing at the top of your screen.
Got it. Here we go. Those were really the only two comments I had on the significant trees after reviewing.
Did anyone else have any comments?
What did we ever come up with about the the like the rotted tree? Remember, we said that you couldn't, you had to have someone look at it before you could take a tree down, but then we were talking about, well, what if something, what if a tree was rot rotting and you did it over the weekend or what did we ever come up with?
That's in there.
I think it was number eight, no, number letter F here. The following activities are exempt. So it is based on a city arborist report. But there's still language for under J on the next page for emergencies.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, not hearing any, I guess. If it's okay with the chair, we can move over to the comp plan discussion.
Yes, that's fine.
All right. So the, we took the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Docket to the City Council and they adopted that docket. I think it was at the end of February, if my memory serves me correctly, or maybe early March. There were several city initiated amendments and one citizen initiated. Technically, it's a text amendment, but it's actually amending one of the figures in our comp plan related to a center boundary. And I'm going to walk through the changes and and some of these were still continuing to refine. So for instance, the six year street plan, we're working with a consultant right now on updating our traffic impact fees. And so they're still finessing the numbers and making minor adjustments, but for the most part, that's in good shape. The First Amendment, this land use amendment to replace the existing table one in the land use element of the Comprehensive Plan, we realized that when we updated our zoning code, there were, there was a figure in the zoning code that still referred to the old zoning names. And so we wanted to update that figure to match the new zoning code that we adopted earlier this year. Figure two was also updated, and I'm going to scroll down to these. And so the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designations by Total Percentage of Land is one of the figures that we're going to replace in the Comprehensive Plan. And obviously, we've made some changes to the land use map over the years. For instance, we re-designated a few churches as civic and institutional as opposed to, I think they previously had a residential designation. So there there have been some changes and we wanted to make sure that those numbers were accurate. The other figure had to do with zoning by percentage of total land in the city. And now that we went from an R8, R12, R20 zone, we now have R123456. So we just used our mapping tool to calculate the percentages and are now displaying accurate information in our Comprehensive Plan. The the next big change, and I think these are a little out of order here, but the there is another table that we are replacing in the Comprehensive Plan. Table one, and actually, this is table one in the land use element. Currently, we have a a table that includes all of the land use designations and a description of those uses. And when we updated the zoning code, some of the these descriptions were a little bit off. And so we corrected them and also added a column that included the corresponding zones. And so previously, when something was commercial in the comp plan, we knew that it could only have commercial zoning. But we have so many commercial zones right now, we wanted to clarify which ones were truly commercial and which ones were residential. And for instance, the commercial mixed use zone here, while it is commercial mixed use, it does allow apartments in that zone. And so it's a flexible zone. And we wanted to be clear, under which land use designation is it allowed? The other thing that we've added to this table, and this is going to be helpful during our next Comprehensive Plan update, we have to do a a lands capacity analysis called the Buildable Lands Report. And that's a report that the county prepares, but they're basically going to look at our city boundary, our zoning, our what land is developed versus what land is underutilized versus vacant. And they try to figure out how much room for growth do we actually have? And when we updated our zoning code, some of our zones, like our mixed use zone, which was downtown, only allowed 12 units per acre. Today, it doesn't actually have a limit, but based on the heights that are allowed, we've made assumptions about how many units per acre are likely to be developed based on the current conditions in Port Orchard. And so for each zone, we have a range of possible densities. And really, this is, this is a range of likely densities that would occur for buildable land purposes. And and what we've done is we've, based on that range, we're making an assumption based on what we actually see in the field. And so for instance, for the R1 zone, we are assuming for buildable lands purposes that things will develop at about seven units per acre. And so when the county calculates how much R1 zoning we have, and after they subtract the critical areas, they're going to assume seven units per acre is the land capacity in Port Orchard. But because that zone allowed theoretically up to 9.8 units per acre, the report could end up showing that we have more capacity than we do because there are other obstacles in our code to developing at that density. Only some sites will actually work at that density based on dimensional requirements and other standards. So this is really meant to sort of kind of look at what is likely to occur under our zoning code versus what is the range of what is possible in our zoning code. And I I think one of the, one of the risks that we run is that if we should, we we had to reduce the urban growth area boundary as part of our last Comprehensive Plan update. If you guys remember, we shrunk a lot of the city, a lot of the growth boundary to the south and east of the city, where we had vacant land that had been urban and now it is rural again. And so if if these numbers end up being too high and we have, we show that we have more capacity for growth in our city than what is likely feasible or viable, it would actually increase the city's capacity and the county's capacity as a whole, which means they might have to shrink the urban growth area yet again because they have too much buildable land. So this is really intended to make sure that we kind of preserve our stable UGA boundaries and that that things don't have to shrink again. With that said, do I, I I would certainly like development to occur at a higher intensity than what is in the far right column. We're just trying to report, we're, we're trying to predict what is likely under our zoning code. So I'll let you ask any questions you have on that before we move on to other sections. All right, not hearing any. So then the other changes going back up, there's in chapter seven of the comp plan, we have tables where we list all of the capital projects that we believe are needed for building out the city. And currently, the sewer and water chapter specifically, they have old cost estimates and incorrect financing methods. There's several, currently, the 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 comp plan says developer for a lot of these, meaning the city isn't planning to do this work. And what that means is that we're not actually collecting capital facility charges to help pay for any of these projects despite previous agreements that we've made. And so for sewer, these projects five, A, B, C, and D, these are all serving the Albertson's kind of Sidney Sedgwick area. And when we wrote our comp plan in 2016 in the last sewer comp plan, we really didn't know what we wanted to do with sewer there and we hadn't assessed anything. And since then, we've done a ton of assessment and we've been talking to developers and trying to figure out how to serve that area. And the problem is we have, you know, 20 or 30 different property owners and we have four really expensive sewer projects that are needed that no one project is big enough to pay for. And so that project needs to be built into our capital facility charge. And by building it into our capital facility charge, we can actually, if a developer then comes in and builds this, they can actually receive a credit for what they build so that they're not paying a connection fee on top of spending $5 million to build a sewer lift station. So these projects are seen as what is really critical to building out our urban land as it currently exists. And frankly, to meet our our growth and employment targets that are in our Comprehensive Plan. So do you have any questions about what these projects are or where they are? Or is this, are you going to take our word for it? All right. The water list, we have the same issue. When we had the moratorium at McCormick Woods, obviously, we had, we learned that in 1998, when we took over the McCormick Water System, we had made commitments that we were going to build certain things. Yet those things weren't in our comp plan or part of our our capital facility charge calculation. So when a developer comes in to buy a house, currently, they pay about $6,000 for a water connection. But we weren't allowed to spend any of that money on projects that aren't on this list and that aren't part of the basis of that capital facility charge. So in order to build out the infrastructure in the McCormick Woods area and also just generally, a lot has changed in the last four years from drilling well 13 to deciding not to build well seven at this time, we've had a lot of changes and we've had a lot of changes in our cost estimates. And so several of these projects still say they are developer funded, but several more have been converted from developer funded to being split between connection charges and existing ratepayers, depending on whether they benefit new development or whether it's replacement of an existing facility. And so all of these changes are needed in order for us to adjust our, the charges that we assess developers when they come in and connect to the system. And so the City Council has commissioned a study to update those charges, but they can't, they can't actually adopt the new charges until we first amend our Comprehensive Plan. And so that's why it's important to adjust these project lists. Another change, it has to do with our Port Orchard Street Standard Classification Map. We had a map in there that had been prepared a few years ago, but we updated our public work standards and we had a few. We had some inconsistencies between what was built in certain locations today and what we want them to look like in the future. Specifically, Bethel, we passed the corridor study and so we want Bethel and Sedgwick are now shown in purple because we want them built in accordance with that plan, not to any one public work standard. Likewise, we completed the Tremont Project and Tremont was classified previously as a a principal arterial, I believe, a a principal arterial, but it's actually designed to our minor arterial A standard. And obviously, we just built that. We're not going to change it in the future so that the designation needs to match what's in our public work standards. So this is really just some cleanup on street classifications. And it it, you know, the local access street to the gray ones. Every residential street, for the most part, other than at McCormick Woods, is a, is one of the local As. At McCormick Woods, they have special development standards that were given to them by the county a decade or more ago. And any questions on on that? All right. And finally, as far as the city amendments go, every year we update our Transportation Improvement Program. And so we are updating that again. And I'm not quite sure why we have 12 pages of very hard to read tables right now. This is supposed to be a three page document. This was sent over from Public Works and we put all of it in the packet, but they are still refining this. What I can say is that there are two tiers. There's the the first tier, which is 2021 through 2026. So that's the Six Year Transportation Improvement Program. And those are projects that we are likely to build in the And those are projects that we are likely to build in the next six years that we believe we have funding or are, are close enough to have, having funds that they should be included on the higher tier list. And then there are tier two projects, which are, we know we need these, we can't afford them, but they're on the list so that when we can't afford them, we can move them into tier one. And these projects are all part of our traffic impact fee that is assessed to developers. And so currently, a developer pays about $2,500 per home to help us build out all of these projects that we've identified. And so we are updating our traffic impact fee study. And every year we update our tip to number one, change the years and the horizons on the top of the table, but also to consider moving projects into tier one. And sometimes projects evolve, for instance, Bethel Sedgwick was previously one project and it was a $33 million project. Then we completed the Bethel corridor study. That study broke the project into five phases with better cost estimates. And so we adjusted those dollar amounts. And so as we get more information on specific change projects, we have to make adjustments into the, the financial portion of the plan. So I think for the planning commission's purposes, the important thing for you to look at is what are these projects? And is there any project specifically that you have a question about or that you think should be reprioritized? I think ultimately, this is a city council finance budget type decision, but you can always offer your recommendation if you think something different needs to happen than this schedule of implementation. So any questions about the projects that are on this list or projects that aren't on this list that you believe should be?
I've heard a few times that there are going to, within the next 20 years, totally redo the Boulevard because of how it crosses the river like 18 times or something. Is that talked about at all?
We have been talking about that, but so far, Port Orchard is not under any court order to replace fish passage barriers. We believe that those 18 culverts likely are barriers to fish. And so we sort of expect that to happen at some point in time. But I do not believe that that project is on the list today.
Okay.
Yeah, that one, I don't see that one on there. So I think, I think the second document, I guess the, the main, the main transportation improvement program is a four page document. And then the subsequent pages, this one is the 2020 to 2025 tier one. So this is last year's document and I believe the changes are shown in red. There at least one project was added. And this is the 2019 to 2024. So this is showing how, how the tip has changed over the last several years. So I don't believe we actually want to adopt all of the old documents. I think they're just provided for reference. And when we print this for the, the packet where we actually consider comp plan amendments, you'll just see the four pages of what we propose to adopt.
So you want me to take everything out but the first four pages?
Yes, I think we only need the, the tier one and the tier two that we are adopting from 2021 going forward.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, and then the appendix B obviously gets updated to change the dates on the transportation improvement plan. And then I'm going to skip the map amendments and let Carrie talk about those at the end. We did receive one application from a private property owner and just got to keep scrolling. Okay, the center, this Mr. Bernstein, you probably know this area pretty well, Geiger and Sedgwick is right here.
Yep.
The property owner, there's two parcels here. And the purple boundary actually bisects these parcels. These parcels actually extend much further to the south. And so what this developer is interested in developing his property and providing multifamily housing. We have incentives for multifamily housing that only apply if you're in a center. And only half of his property is in the center and half of it is out. And so he was concerned that from a, an auditor standpoint, that it's going to be really difficult for the auditor to give him an incentive on one half of a property when there's the, this is not a surveyed boundary. And so he is asking that we include all of his property within this center. And so we are basically extending the purple line further south to the highway to include these two 20 acre parcels. And that potentially opens the door for him to get a preferred tax treatment for the first eight years after he builds a project. So you can see the, the two parcels here in blue. Currently, the line goes right across about midway through the property and this just enlarges the center to include both parcels in their entirety. So he, he provided a written project narrative. I think staff is supportive of this proposal that doesn't put us sideways with PSRC or any of the regional planning agencies that, that deal with centers planning. And actually, the we realize that the, there's a minimum size to be a center and this one is actually a little bit too small. They adopted criteria that said that you're supposed to be 160 acres. And so this actually enlarges our center to be closer to the required size. We're told the required size is somewhat flexible, but we were a little bit short. So I think that's something that we support. And if there's any questions about it, I'm happy to take those now. And otherwise, Carrie can tell, walk you through the zoning map changes.
Can you tell me what that means by when you call it a center? What, what does that mean?
So if you remember when we adopted our 2016 comprehensive plan, we adopted the centers approach to growth and we wanted to really focus our investment in sewer and water projects and transportation projects to support growth in concentrated areas. Because it's cheaper for us to provide the infrastructure in small focused areas than it is evenly peanut butter kind of spread around the city. And so we identified several centers in the city. The lower mile hill area, like near the mall, if the mall were to redevelop, that's one of the centers we've identified where we would want to prioritize growth. The Sidney Sedgwick area is another area where we have a bunch of vacant land and we need to make investments. And we really are trying to, to, to put some growth there to make that a more vibrant area. Downtown is also a center. And so, so if you're in a center, you're expected to see more growth than if you're, than if you're not in a center.
Okay.
All right, Carrie, I will turn this over to you if there's no other questions and you just tell me if you need me to scroll through these. Do you prefer just to talk from the map or do you want to talk from the list?
It doesn't really matter. I could just talk.
Okay.
The, the city's map amendment is basically a housekeeping item. If you'll remember, a couple of years ago, we adopted all new zones for the city. And when going through the map, we were updating all of the zones and creating new classifications, we noticed as staff that there were a number of, of locations where the underlying comp plan land use designation was not consistent with the zoning designation. And this wasn't something that was created when we updated the zones. It just happened to already be there where like you would have a church be like commercial, but it's really, it's really supposed to be civic and institutional. And so what, what I did was just go through here and find everything I could find where we have a use that has proper zoning now. The zoning map, we believe, is correct with its new zones and zoning classifications. But the zone does not reflect the correct underlying comp plan land use designation. So if you look on this, the, the table that, that Nick has up right now, what you see is it like the, I'm just looking at the first page, the Christian Life Center. Oops, could you go back down just one row, Nick? For, for zoning, oops. Somehow it's not, it's, there you go. Okay, so the zoning is civic and institutional. The comp plan though says it's low density residential. And so those two are not consistent. So what it really should be is public and community service, public and community services. And so we wanted to go ahead and make those consistent at this time. And that's the same thing for all of these. We simply wanted to make sure that the underlying land use designation on the comp plan map is consistent with the current zoning and the current new zoning designations. So there are just a number of properties here throughout the city where we're just trying to make those consistent. And so we've notified all of the property owners that we're simply making an administrative name change to the underlying comp plan land use designation. Nothing is actually changing on their property. It's not changing the developability, the density, the underlying uses that are allowed, because that's actually been determined by the zoning already. We just want consistency. And so the maps that follow here, it's just showing you where all of those properties are. Most of these are churches. We used to allow churches to be in a wider variety of zones. One of the reasons that we changed that policy was because we wanted to be sure that when we do the buildable lands analysis, when we update the comp plan in a couple of years, we don't want churches to count as residential because that implies that they're about to be, or could be developed for residential uses. And actually, they're likely to stay as civic and institutional uses for the indeterminate future. So we didn't want it to skew that way.
Hey Carrie, I just noticed we, Mark and I had a conversation just earlier this week about the city property here on Mitchell. And so we, we should talk about this tomorrow as to whether we want to change this because I don't believe that there's any public use for this property. We may want to surplus this.
Okay.
So if we were going to surplus it, I don't think we would want to have a civic zone. We'd probably want to have a zone comparable to what's surrounding it.
Can you go back up? Cause I don't remember what its current designation is. It might have, it's current zoning might be okay.
Yeah, it's current high density residential.
Okay.
Well, and it's zoning is civic institutional.
Yes.
Change that from
You want to rezone.
It should be high, high density residential. It should be a zoning change on this one.
Okay, so you want to pull it out of here and then just you'll, you will come in for a rezone?
Right, let's talk to Mark about this.
Okay. So did anyone, did anyone have any questions about what the intent of this is or how any of these properties could be affected? It's really just a cleanup and housekeeping item to make sure that our zoning and land use maps remain consistent with each other.
Yeah, just curious how it would be affected, say like a forest park going from, what is that, medium density residential to commercial? Does it change the tax structure at all or not at this time?
It shouldn't change the tax structure because my understanding from, from talking to the assessor about this back when we did zoning updates is they are looking at the zoning of the property. They're not actually looking at a city's comprehensive plan designation. They're looking at zoning to determine the developability and for the value of the property or the taxable value.
Right, and they already have a neighborhood mixed use zone on that property. It's just that it's, it's medium density residential in the comp plan. And so the current zoning and the comp plan designation are inconsistent with one another. To be consistent, that needs to be commercial and then it keeps the neighborhood mixed use zone, which only allows for very limited commercial uses.
Right. Very evident in that area. I was just curious if the taxes were such that, that it, that was a commercial property for all these years and, and taxed that way or did, or was it taxed as a residential? I was just curious on my part.
It would be taxed commercial. I would be surprised if it isn't currently commercial.
Yeah, they know that they use this commercial. It's, it's a legal business. And if you look at the assessor's information for that, they do describe it as a business. So the only time they, they only, they only assess strictly by zoning when it's vacant. So they're looking at the potential development of the property. But when it's already got a use on it and it doesn't appear to be underutilized, my understanding is they're taxing you on what you have on the property, what it's being used for at this time legally under current zoning. So it should not make any difference to their taxes.
Okay, thank you.
This hillside professional building is one right there at the corner of the courthouse where we've had that, that one actually had residential zoning for a long time. And even though it's a commercial building, people would come in and they'd want to put a business in there. And so we fix things on the zoning side, but the comp plan is still inconsistent with that commercial building that's there.
Nick, could you please scan, scroll back to the port warehouse for the port property?
Right. There you go.
What, what is that? Where is that now?
It's the parking lot with the boat launch.
Oh, okay. And how is it currently zoned?
You have to go back up to the table.
That is currently, comp plan is commercial. So right now, the designation implies that we should be encouraging the development of that site rather than the preservation of that site as a public facility.
Got it. Thank you.
Right, any other questions? Not hearing any. I think that is the end of our business items unless there's anything for the good of the order.
Anybody have anything?
Nope.
So are we ready to adjourn?
Yeah, it was nice to see everyone.
I want to, I have a couple of questions, but afterward, I mean, after we adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, so the May 20th, 2020 planning commission is adjourned.
Thank you.
Carrie, are you stopping the recording?
I have stopped recording.
It still says recording on my end.
Mine says, oh.
I let a recorder blow on the other day for